Welcome to the January 9th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Missions, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, Lord, at this new year. I just ask that specifically tonight that you watch over all the people in our community and our region with all this rain that's coming through, Lord, that you just keep everybody warm, dry, and safe, and all of our crews and everybody that's out there working in this weather, Lord, that you also protect them and wash over them. I ask that you guide us with your wisdom tonight as we make decisions on behalf of the city. And most of all, I want to thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, that you sent for our sins, Lord, so that we could all be with you one day. I ask all this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we were scheduled to celebrate the accomplishments of the Lynchburg of Liberty Christian Academy's football team. However, due to the possibility of inclement weather, the team has requested this much deserved recognition to be postponed into a later date so the students can safely come back another time and to join us in the chamber. So we will do that at another date. But I did want to, I did not recognize this earlier, so I wanted to do this. It is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I'd like to recognize both of our officers who are in chamber tonight. They're brave men and women who specifically serve Lynchburg and our law enforcement community. Thank you so much for what you do. We truly appreciate you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I? Yes.
I'm sorry to be stickler. I think we're going to have to wait on voting on this item until the next meeting, considering the fact that a majority of council would not be voting in favor of it. Is that correct? Seeing as three members up here would not be able to vote on these minutes, would we need four votes tonight to pass it and three abstentions? Or three in favor and three abstentions if that passes? Do you see that?
I understand. So I think if there are permissible abstentions, then the remaining individuals would constitute the majority for purposes of adopting it. But certainly, if council wanted to pass it over to allow the remaining council member that isn't here to participate, it could. But that's my understanding.
Thoughts?
Either way, for me, I'm, except I have to abstain from October 25th and November 1st because I was out of the country. You have less people here now, so you might want to wait.
What do we just want to? Wait till Jeff gets back?
Wait until the next meeting, then? By consensus, we'll just move to the next one.
I think that's fine. That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to do anything on our?
Sorry for being stickler.
No, that's fine. That makes it easier. Is it okay, Alicia, to just move on?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. It's okay to be a stickler. We appreciate it. All right, public hearing. The next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality or residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to counsel for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution granting a conditional use permit to West Lynchburg Baptist Church preschool to allow the use of an existing structure at 3031 Memorial Avenue as a childcare facility. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Fischaisen, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. The purpose of this petition is to allow the use of a portion of an existing structure as a childcare facility and preschool for up to 70 children. The subject property at 3031 Memorial Avenue contains approximately 1 and 5 tenths acres. Our comprehensive plans' future land use map recommends an institution use for the subject property. Our institutions include the religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities within the city, such as churches, cemeteries, private schools, service clubs, et cetera. Property is zoned R3, medium-density residential district. Childcare facilities and preschools are permitted in this district upon approval of a conditional use permit from council. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on December 13th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll call you back up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chris Jordan, and I have the specific privilege of serving as a senior pastor of West Lynchburg Baptist Church. Been here just about three years. It was just about a year ago, actually a year ago at this specific time, that TC Miller had shut down because of a water pipe burst, and we absorbed 250 students and faculty, so we could use our building to accommodate for that. That was a wonderful opportunity, but it also showed our congregation, our building can be used throughout the week to meet the needs that are here. We discovered that in our particular community, that childcare and school readiness is one of the number-one deficits in our community, that we've got to meet that need. And knowing that, we began to talk about that, and then we were introduced through different conversations with the YMCA. This is Rebecca White, who is with the Y, and a partnership is what we're looking at, that they could run it, but we could use our facility to do that. And so just thank you for considering this opportunity for us.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
None.
No? All right. Well, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Okay? Any discussion? Or, I'm sorry, would you like to speak your motion?
I appreciate you being here, Pastor Jordan, and I think that this is a great endeavor that you guys are taking on. You nailed it. We definitely need more opportunities for childcare and school readiness programs. They were huge for my kids, I know that. And I really appreciate seeing the private sector step up to do this and doing it with a faith-based institution, because we're going to be able to get these kids a great foundation, too, while we're also getting them prepared for school. So thank you for doing that, and I look forward to getting this passed.
Dr. Wilder?
It's always a need for childcare for our children, so happy to see the church opening doors up for our children, because they definitely need more assistance in early, excuse me, early learned education. Thank you.
Anyone else? I agree. I think I was over there visiting you the very last day you had the TC Miller children in before they transitioned back to their building, and it was wonderful. So again, thank you for doing that, for meeting that need. I remember just thinking, like, this is Lynchburg. This is how we do, as far as taking care of our own, and just meeting a need when there is one. So thank you for doing that for the students, but also, again, it showed how you now can meet another need, because childcare is a great need in our city. So I'm very happy to support this for you. So let's go ahead and vote. Oh. So if it's okay with council, I'll call for a voice vote. Okay, so just down. Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Uh, let's see. Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
Yes.
Mayor Reed? Yes. Motion passes, 6-0, one absent. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home programs for the fiscal year 2025, Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. Staff will provide a brief summary of their requests. Ms. Gabby Bateman?
Good evening, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and members of City Council. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025, program year 2024, Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Goals for the development of the fiscal year 2025, Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that we hold a public hearing each year to review the goals in the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. Tonight's public hearing will provide citizens and other interested parties an opportunity to comment on the goals. A 15-day public comment period to receive citizen input regarding the goals was initiated on December 22nd, 2023, through a legal notice published in the news in advance. These are the housing goals, which I provided to you in your agenda packet, and the non-housing goals. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
None.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Matter rests with council. Does it have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
You know, again, the CDBG program is amazing program for our community. So many great things, from light housing to support for LIMCAAG, and so many great housing organizations, Habitat for Humanity, so many great projects. I support those programs. I've served on CDA Committee for several years. They have just rotated off, but I admire the work they're doing and the department that they do. It's amazing work. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay. I think we're supposed to vote?
Yeah.
Does everyone just finish it now?
All right, go ahead and vote, please. The motion passes, 6-0, one absent. It worked! Yay! So excited.
I don't like it. Get the old one back.
All right, moving on. Consideration of adopting and ordnance amending Section 14-33 of Article 3 of Chapter 14 of the Lynchburg City Code and relocating the polling place of the 4th precinct of Second Ward from Fairview Christian Church to William Marvin Bass Elementary School. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Dan Pence?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The recommendation that we have is that the council consider relocating the polling place for some reasons that we have previously presented. We'll just summarize that briefly. Electoral Board of City of Lynchburg voted in its December 7th meeting to transfer the Fairview Heights precinct over to Bass Elementary School. The reason is that the new polling place would have access barriers for the disabled reduced, less of those barriers. And so essentially, for ADA reasons, we would like to go to the new precinct. We'd like to make use of Bass Elementary School for this 4th precinct of the Second Ward, starting with the expected March 2024 Republican primary election. If we can get all of the pieces together by then, we need to get the, well, we're planning on getting the Attorney General to weigh in on this change, so we have to get that done. And then we have a requirement to notify all the voters in the precinct by 15 days before the election would take place. So those are the timelines that we have to work with. Just as a review, the polling place is about 4.5, sorry, excuse me, .4 miles from the old polling place. It's a city-owned school property, and so therefore, a little more adherent to ADA requirements or up-to-date with ADA requirements. The parking in the proposed location is level, whereas on the existing location, it's not level, and the parking spaces are about equivalent in terms of size, or maybe a little better than the new location. And the other factor is that curbside voting could be within the 40-foot prohibitive area. That would be beneficial to those who are coming as a curbside voter to vote. And I would like to have David Newmeyer, the former Chair of the Board, share his thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm the former Chair, and my term on the Electoral Board ended on December 30th, and I did not seek reappointment for the matters of maintaining my day job. But I wanted to speak to this particular matter because it was my recommendation that we move the polling place. Fairview Christian, I think we have used for a number of years as a polling place for Fairview Heights, which, and we're grateful for use of the building, but it has a number of barriers for access to anyone who is using a wheelchair, has difficulty walking. There is a parking lot, which can be used for handicap spaces, but it's on a hillside sloping down away from the church. The sidewalk from that to the entry door is long and also on a slope. The parking area that's used by most voters requires the voter to cross the street and then mount steps, about four steps, to get up to the door. There's about a three-inch curb at the foot of the door, requiring a step up, obviously not achievable with a wheelchair. And so Bass Elementary is a much better facility, much more accessible. As Dan Pence mentioned, it's got better parking. It does have the same sort of curb, a threshold issue for the two back doors that are used for access to the gymnasium, which is where the voting would take place. But Deputy Superintendent Reed indicated that Lynchburg City Schools would either put in a temporary ramp at each of the back doors, or even permanent ramps at each of the back doors, so that would not be a barrier. So I felt that this would be a much better facility for use of all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will call you back up if we have any questions. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
None.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Council Missions?
I just appreciate the work you guys have put into this as the Electoral Board and our registrar. Can tell you, based on everything you guys said and what I've personally seen, that there's a lot to traverse to get into the current polling place, and Bass is such a beautiful school and building, and it's also nice to showcase that. So I think it's going to be a much better opportunity as a polling place to give people more access and to make people more comfortable to be able to get in and out quick, and, you know, meets all those accessibility needs that we had to address over there. So I appreciate you guys sorting that out and figuring it out and working double time, really, to get this done so quickly.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, again, there's so many challenges in finding a polling place, because there's so many requirements you need. So they looked at several properties, looked at Fairview Heights Rec Center, that was not available. So this is probably one of the best locations they could use in that vicinity, so it's not outside, not too far from where the current polling place is. So I commend the finding the location, because that is challenging with all the requirements. You've got to have door size and everything else, so I think I support this motion.
Great. Any other comments?
Yes, good job. I worked, I worked the poll at Fairview Heights and had to help people up the step, and good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? I agree, and I just want to thank Mr. Newmeyer for his service. I know he worked for quite a while, serving in this way, so we really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, with that said, we will vote. Oh, wait, it went away. Mary, did you say it went away? Mine went away. Okay, I'll reset the vote. Okay. Okay. Go ahead and vote. Nope. Mine keeps disappearing. I'm not doing anything. Okay, I'll reset. Growing pains, we're all good. The motion passes, 6-0, one absent. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 budget, as well as adopting several ordinances for public safety recruitment and retention bonuses, and to waive specified fiscal year 2025 fees. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Greg Patrick?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Going to take you on the Wayback Machine a little bit tonight. We're going to go back to our retreat from December 1st of this year to provide context for those in the audience and those at home on what we're voting on today. First and foremost, it is strategic investment opportunities. At our retreat, as you'll remember, we had a good conversation on our fiscal year 2023 excess fund balance. Now, keep in mind, that's the fiscal year that wrapped up this past June 30th. So we're currently in fiscal year 2024. The fiscal year, the excess fund balance we're talking about was from fiscal year 2023. We had $15 million in excess fund balance. What that means is, that's money in excess of what we're required to have by City Council's financial policies that require a certain level of funds in place for a rainy day, and also funds that City Council had already appropriated into the fiscal year 2024 budget. When we took that into consideration, we had $15 million left in excess fund balance from fiscal year 2023. As we discussed, a long conversation about the Riverfront Amphitheater Project, which we set aside $3 million to fund, that left us with $12 million in remaining excess fund balance. And as we had been preparing for the retreat, we'd spoken with the mayor, we'd spoken with the vice mayor, and there was a request to bring to council other strategic investment opportunities that council may have at their, may have available to them for the use, for to use this $12 million to support. So that's what, that's what we did. We brought, we were going to go through those strategic investments that we brought to council, and then ultimately, those investments that council by sticker vote, which will demonstrate further into the, into the presentation, would be supportive of. And then today, we're here to make that a reality, to make that investment. So again, we're going to go through the entire presentation. We want to make sure everyone has context. Anyone speaking tonight as part of the public hearing has a full context of what they're speaking on. So first, the first strategic investment opportunity was the conversion of White Rock Elementary School into a community center. Recently, this building was vacated by LIMCAAG, who had been using it to run the Head Start program. This funding would begin the renovation and transform the facility into a neighborhood center. Again, once this, once the transformation was complete, the renovation was complete, it would require, I think, 1.5 FTEs, but that's in future budgets. Next, we had renovations of the main library. The design is complete for this project. Construction funding is planned for fiscal year 2025, but that planned amount is not sufficient to complete the construction project. Really, it comes back down to what we've talked about frequently. Construction inflation recently has just been much higher than we had planned and expected, so the costs for the project have increased. It would be $3 million to close that gap. Next, we're purchasing a ladder truck for the fire department. This additional ladder truck will be needed for the new Candlers Mountain Station. Even if we don't build that Candlers Mountain Station, we need another ladder truck. There is a 36-month lead time right now from order to delivery for these ladder trucks, so we want to be able to move forward on this as quickly as possible, knowing that we won't see this truck for nearly three years. And that's a $2.4 million price tag. Next, it's the first of two fee waivers. We would waive the, council took action in the fiscal year 2024 budget to waive the $10 per month refuse collection fee. This action would continue that waiver through the end of fiscal year 2025. So for those of you who don't operate in fiscal years, that is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. It would continue that fee waiver until June 30th of 2025. Results in $120 annual savings for residential customers. Next item is the property toolkit. Council, in your work session today, we had a long conversation about the property toolkit. It's $1.5 million for three items: demolition, stabilization of blighted structures, seed funding for a housing trust fund, and funding for strategic property acquisition. Next is the second of the two fee waivers. This would continue the vehicle license fee waiver through fiscal year 2025. You can see on the slides that this is a fee that you pay when you register your vehicle. Depending on the size of the vehicle, there's different prices that you pay for your annual registration fee. This would continue that waiver that council implemented for fiscal year '24 into fiscal year 2025, through fiscal year 2025. Next, the design of the Bass Elementary renovations. These are design funds for the expansion of Bass Elementary. There's an estimate that that expansion would cost about $15 million. Typically, design is about 10% of construction. This aligns with Lynchburg City School Board's facilities plan. Next, we have the implementation of public safety recruiting and retention strategy. If you'll remember at our last meeting, Dr. Holly Jennings presented that strategy. This would primarily fund the retention bonus program that we're requesting funds to implement. Next, the design and construction of the MLK Bridge improvements. Current structure, this is Memorial Avenue, 5th Street. Current structure was built in 1982 and named after Dr. King in 2005. Significant maintenance is necessary and public outreach is underway. Next, the first of three potential park improvement projects, the planning and construction of Paramount Park. All of these park construction projects leverage existing funding. This leverages grant funding. It would, it would lead to improved field, fields, and help to address the need for additional athletic fields in the city. Next, the replacement of the city stadium artificial turf. That turf is nearing the end of its useful life. It's starting to show wear and tear. This is a real opportunity for council, as the turf replacement company right now is working over at Lynchburg University, University of Lynchburg. They would be able to quickly transition to city stadium and hopefully be able to get there in time to complete this project prior to spring sports, so prior to soccer this year, which would be, which would be great. Next, we have the plan, planning and construction of College Park. This aligns with the city's master plan that council adopted in 2022. It would combine the first two phases together, instead of just allowing us to do Phase 1. Would provide savings, because we would be able to mobilize both phases at once, and it would leverage stormwater work that we're planning to do out in College Park. Next, improvements to the Randolph College business corridor. This is, there's been a ton of work that the private sector has done over on, over in this corridor. This would leverage some of that work to provide pedestrian, wayfinding, and other improvements. We looked around the city for other business corridors that might be a good fit for funding like this, but, but this corridor over at Randolph College, which is, I think Bedford and the section of Rivermont Avenue that fronts Randolph College, is really ripe for public sector investment to leverage the private sector investment that's already occurred. Next, the planning and construction of Heritage Park. Again, the master planning here is already underway. There are projects that are already funded in the CIP. This would leverage what's going on now to allow for field lighting and additional amenities to expand the use and hours of the park. And then finally, to approve the parking at the Awareness Garden. This is a $250,000 city investment. Build new parking at the Ed Page entrance to the Blackwater Creek Trail, where the Awareness Garden is. The parking is expected to cost total about $375,000. The Awareness Garden organization is pledging to commit $125,000 towards the parking and an additional $200,000 to expand the garden. I don't know if you've had a chance to visit the Awareness Garden, but it is a place for those who have been impacted by cancer to go and just contemplate the impact that horrible disease has had on people. So ultimately, this is a $575,000 project. The city contribution would be $250,000 of that $575,000. The garden would pledge the rest. So next, on December 1st, we had an activity. All of these projects were placed on poster boards based on their alignment with City Council's different strategic priorities: lifelong learning, infrastructure, quality of life, public safety, and economic development. And council was given blue stickers and asked to go put a sticker on all of the projects that they would support. It was a trial run. Some of the council members voted by volume for those items. Some of the council members voted by volume for, for those items they were particularly supportive of. So we, we started again, and this time we started with green stickers. And every council member voted once for those projects that they would support, and we went through and we looked at all the projects that had four green stickers. Those were the ones that had at least majority support for city council. And these are those projects on the screen now. So those projects that would, would be funded in this current fiscal year with the excess fund balance are the White Rock Elementary School, the ladder truck, public safety recruiting and retention strategy, replacement of the city stadium artificial turf, the planning and construction of Heritage Park, and the improved parking at the Awareness Garden. And then, of course, those items that would be funded in the fiscal year 2025 budget and would require a code change are, that, that council supported is the refuse and vehicle license fee waiver continuations, 12.1 million dollars. So these are the items that at least four members of council supported in investing that excess fund balance in. And in order to make that happen, it requires four votes tonight. First is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget to use 8.3 million dollars of the fiscal year 2023 excess fund balance for strategic investment opportunities. And those are for the projects listed at the top of this graph, the six projects listed at the top of this table. Next, council would adopt an ordinance to approve the public safety recruiting and retention strategy, specifically the retention bonus program, which requires council approval. And then third, there would be an ordinance to suspend trash collection fees in fiscal year 2025. And fourth, there would be an ordinance to suspend the motor vehicle license fees in fiscal year 2025. Those four council actions would see these strategic investments implemented. And with that, we turn it over to you.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks so much. We'll call you back up if we need to. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any voicemails?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed and the matter rests with council. May I have a motion adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 24 budget for the use of the 8.3 million dollars of fiscal year 23 excess fund balance for strategic investment opportunity projects?
Madam Mayor, is there a way we can divide the question on those projects?
No, it's all, it's all lumped together. Yes?
Is, is there a way that we can divide the question on those projects?
So I think that would depend on whether a majority of council would approve something like that. So as of now, what's before council is one resolution with all of these items for one particular amount of appropriation of monies. So if, if council really has the pleasure of voting on it as a whole, it may do so. If not, it can divide the question as it sees fit.
Well, then I'm going to make a motion that we divide the question on the, on the items.
Is there a second on that? Okay, well, there's no second, then we'll go back to the original thing, which is, do I have a motion adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 24 budget for the use of the 8.3 million dollars of fiscal year 23 excess fund balance for strategic investment opportunity projects?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Walter?
What's the, I like about the project, you know, I might not agree with all of them, but it does cover a variety of spectrums in our community, so it's kind of like a negotiation. So I do approve of the selection that the whole group approved, the whole group agreed upon. Thank you.
Okay. Vice President Pauli?
For transparency, this would be the, implement the public safety recruitment and retention strategy. No.
This is the full 8.3, this is everything.
So just so we're clear, because I even fell into it, let's have a clear understanding about what this full packet is one more time. You, you can stay seated if you'd like, but.
Let me pull up a slide.
So what you're voting on, what this first ordinance approves is the first six items listed here.
Thank you. So that'd be convert White Rock, purchase ladder truck, implement public safety recruitment strategy. So I have it flipped here because I have the resolutions in front of me. So the first six would be, would include the retention strategy.
Yes, there's, I, I guess there's a bit of a.
So you're appropriating, this resolution is appropriating money for all of, for those six things.
I understand.
There's an additional ordinance that accompanies the retention strategy because the Virginia code requires approval by city council for bonuses, which is incorporated into the, the retention strategies.
There's the miscommunication. Thank you. So we were saying the same thing, but on different pages. So it'd be the first batch of items that we're voting on there. That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Comment? No? Okay, well, then we can go ahead and vote. Yeah. Alicia. I think it's my name. Try it one more time, please.
Okay, I'll reset the, I'm going to reset the vote.
I'm sorry, y'all. Do this? Okay.
Okay. The motion passes 6-0 with one absent.
Okay. May I have a motion adopting an ordinance approving the public safety recruiting and attention strategy?
Second.
Okay. Vice President Pauli?
This is a continuation of, I think, a dedication of council and the city of Lynchburg for making Lynchburg the number one choice for law enforcement professionals in Virginia. I think that's a goal that we have, and we're acting on it yet again. So I, I stand by this. I, I look to the manager and his team to implement it fully and then also look at those ways that make the quality of life better for our officers and firefighters and everything, all the way through. And if that means that officers get to walk around with a beard and we get a few complaints for it, tough. So obviously, I'm, I'm on Team Beard, as, as everyone can imagine. But needless to say, this is something that I, I think honors a commitment of this council, and I ask my colleagues to certainly support it.
Dr. Walter?
I would support it as well. We need to do what's, it's a challenge hiring officers and fire and the public safety officials, so we need to do whatever we can to offer incentives for the department. Thank you. And also now, non, non, 911 workers as well. Yes, thank you. That's it.
Yes, well, I support it fully. So it's a good thing. So.
We've come a long way. And, and it's, it's a good thing. I mean, we've really come a long way and, and we had a lot of challenges and issues in the past because we weren't investing our money in our public safety. We were not investing properly in our police officers or firefighters or 911 telecommunicators. The 911 telecommunications thing just blew my mind when I saw the budget in this current fiscal year that we're in right now, we're putting that together, because it was such a small investment. I think it was about 250,000, what we did, somewhere in that ballpark. And just how, how did it take so long to get that right? You know? So I'm, I'm just really pleased to see how far we've come because we were nowhere where, nowhere near where we needed to be to be competitive. We were absolutely hemorrhaging people left and right. Heard some good information recently, but that, that we're starting to stabilize that. And, and I know that, that proportionally, I think, the dispatchers are probably the most understaffed right now. Is that right? So the neat thing about this program is that they're going to be able to target the departments based on that ratio of understaffing. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. Is that, that, that's right. So, so when we've got a smaller department like the dispatchers that are just really overworked, right? We can target that with higher incentives to try to keep the people that are experienced retained and to try to recruit new people. And that, to me, is just so important because we really need to focus on retaining those veterans. You cannot learn the stuff that you have to do in public safety in an academy. You learn it on the streets. And same thing with the dispatchers, you learn it on the phones, right? So I appreciate this initiative and I look forward to seeing great results out of it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Unless I want to upset something I want to say.
This sets an example also for other areas. I know it's going to take a commitment and we're going to have to really pinch our resources, but there's an area that is, I think it's next up, and I think we're giving the resources they need to be at this level of emphasis, but I think it's going to take us partnering with the school board. There are certain front-facing positions that I think Lynchburg should be no question. And so I hope, I hope going into next year, we could find ways of doing similar things for the teachers. Lynchburg should be the number one place for a public safety professional and teachers, period. And I think this is laying the groundwork for other frontline areas. And so I just wanted to offer that, knowing that they still need help, and we've done a lot for public safety, and we've got more work to do, so.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm so proud that Lynchburg, just in the year I've been on council, has made such a massive investment in our public safety sector in a time where cities are literally having to close police departments, that we are taking this so seriously to make, to ensure, A, the safety of our law enforcement officers who daily put their lives on the line for us and sacrifice time with their families for us, that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that they are safe and understand that they are valued to us and that we're, so that our city is safe. Because if we're not making the proper investments in them for their safety and their training and to retain, as Council Mission said, you, you know, you, there's no way to replace a veteran, anybody. I mean, you can't teach that. And so retaining those who had time in to then be able to be mentors to those new that come along is so, so important. So I'm so proud that just in this year alone, we are taking this so seriously and, and that we're able to do this. So I think it's going to make a massive difference. It already has, and so I think this is just another step in the right direction. So let's go ahead and vote.
I know, but it hasn't come up yet. It's not on my screen.
Okay, I'm going to reset the vote.
Y'all, I'm sorry, it's my computer. I haven't touched anything.
The motion passes 6-0.
Great. Okay. May I have a motion adopting an ordinance suspending trash collection fees in fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Council Missions?
Anything we can do to, you know, keep putting your money back in your pocket? That's what we need to be doing. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
Yeah, unnecessary taxing is, is not good. Some people can't afford trash stickers or even the $120 a year that they paid to have their trash picked up. So this would be good for another year or two.
Anyone else? No? I agree, this would be a great way to, again, offset some other, you know, increases in costs for the citizens, so this is great, great for us to be able to do. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 5-1 with one absent.
Okay. May I have a motion adopting an ordinance suspending motor vehicle license fees in fiscal year 25?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Council Missions?
Nothing. Nothing, sir.
Councilman Taylor?
It's a blessing.
And Councilman Dole?
I hate this tax like everybody else does. Matter of fact, I have an 18-year-old car that has 180,000 miles on it. I still pay, I don't know, 100, whatever, whatever, I pay every year on it. It's very distress, distressing to me also. However, if we didn't do this, we could probably do the property toolkit, which would be incredibly good service for our community. I just think that I would rather have seen, I know what handwriting's on the wall on this, because you're not interested in doing that, but it's a disappointment to me that we didn't look at the property toolkit, which I thought was really much beneficial for some of the areas in our community that need that kind of sort of help and support.
Council Missions?
Didn't we advertise that we were going to be doing both of these for two years? Let, one was for one year, which is the motor vehicle. Was it the motor vehicle license fee? The trash was for the two years. The trash was for the two years. Yep, so that's all I was curious about.
I agree, this is another great way to give money back to the citizens, but I, I agree with you, Councilman Dole, I think the housing toolkit is very important and I, and I look forward to discussing that further in this next budget discussion. With that said, let's go ahead and vote.
Dr. Walter?
I did.
You did? Hit save?
Yes, I think it topped out.
Okay, I'm going to reset the vote.
We'll, we'll. Bear with us, y'all, it's new technology.
Okay.
The motion passes 4-2 and one absent. Okay. The next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section under the agenda advisement, of the agenda, under advisement, and may refer concern to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidations to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a group representative regarding a waiver of our vehicle personal property taxes as we continue to serve the local community. John Salmon from United Unified Potential. Please restate your name, your group that you represent, and your locality of residence.
Can I ask a favor before you start your timer?
What?
You, you know that I can do my five-minute spiel. I think I've proven that. I, I would like just a little bit of leeway to be able to, to just ask for some clarification on a couple of things.
We can have a conversation with you.
Right. I mean, it's been a long time working to this point.
Right, we've had, we've had emails, and so we just have to have the regular public comment, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that. But, well, I'm John Salmon, I represent Unified Potential, we're 501(c)(3) for transportation. I came here in 2021 and asked you to waive my personal property tax, and I promise you it's the last time I'm going to come in here. I really feel like this has been a big waste of my time. This whole project was a massive mistake. When I started, I really had no idea what I was doing. I didn't know what a business plan was. What most people don't understand is this, for me, was personal. When my dad got dementia and couldn't drive, it opened my eyes to how important transportation is to people, and my rationale was this, if I do nothing more than help him live a little better, it's money well spent, and I owe him everything I have. He's responsible for my privilege, I guess people would say, my work ethic, my drive to learn and understand, my mental resiliency that lets me keep going when people think I'm an idiot, or they just don't like me, which is a lot of people now. I never got to do that because we killed him with isolation during COVID. And I took the inheritance that left me and I invested every single penny in this endeavor. I told my family I would only keep pushing so long as I was sure it would work. And I knew from the beginning that this would be incredibly difficult. People always talk about the multitude of barriers to progress. There's only one barrier to progress and it's people. People who don't want to change, people who don't want to take time When I started, I really had no idea what I was doing. I didn't know what a business plan was. What most people don't understand is this, for me, was personal. When my dad got dementia and couldn't drive, it opened my eyes to how important transportation is to people. And my rationale was this, if I do nothing more than help him live a little better, it's money well spent and I owe him everything I have. He's responsible for my privilege, I guess people would say, my work ethic, my drive to learn and understand, my mental resiliency that lets me keep going when people think I'm an idiot or they just don't like me, which is a lot of people now. I never got to do that because we killed them with isolation during COVID. And I took the inheritance that left me and I invested every single penny in this endeavor. I told my family I would only keep pushing so long as I was sure it would work. And I knew from the beginning that this would be incredibly difficult. People always talk about the multitude of barriers to progress. There's only one barrier to progress and it's people. People who don't want to change, people who don't want to take time to learn, people who are too afraid to try something new, people who just don't like you and don't want you to succeed, and people who have massive financial incentive for things to stay exactly the way they are. I knew from the beginning that I would have to build something far superior was already in the market. But this is where I made my mistake. I didn't realize until this past year that no matter what I did, this was never going to work. I was looking at things rationally, the amount of money, the time, figuring out how to work through things like existing regulations. Remember when we changed taxi cab laws here? You'd be the only, that's still really important, I think. Most people don't understand it. That's kind of human nature and another reality I knew I would have to deal with. We overcame every one of those things and we accomplished everything we set out to do. We brought together an incredible team and we built the country's first and only financially sustainable microtransit system that serves the needs of this community right now, turnkey. And when I say it's financially sustainable, I mean it eliminates the need for ongoing government funding. And as our customers pay us enough money for the services we provide to cover our expenses, that's like a business plan. Which is exactly why people don't want it to work and ironically why it was never going to work. One way or another, the will of the people to keep doing what is in their best interest wins the day. The only time this doesn't happen, and I mean anywhere, like because in this country we're free to screw each other over, especially in subtle ways with smiles on our faces and apologies for the way things are that we can't do anything about. The only time this doesn't happen is when leadership steps up and says, no, we aren't going to do this anymore, we're going to fix this. That's the only reason it happens and you didn't do that. My father left me everything I needed to build something of incredible value to our community and frankly, I feel like he all squandered it. When you take a position of leadership, you take on responsibility. If you don't know what you're doing, it's your responsibility to learn. Even if you're just a volunteer on a board, particularly when the board is responsible for a critical public system that spends ten million dollars a year, you should know what the hell is going on. You should read, starting with policies and procedures. Did you ever read our proposal? Did you read the feasibility study? I mean, could you tell these people what the plan is? I sent you an email to support my request that my personal property taxes waived. It's based on lodging and data. And I don't, I don't expect anybody to even read it. I don't know that everybody's ever read anything I sent to them. I always feel like a serf petitioning lords of the manor with this little process. If you agree to waive the taxes, I'll try to keep serving the needs of the community. There's nothing like what we have going. If we stop doing this, nobody's going to be able to support Department of Health. I took a person to work today. I mean, ironically, how ironic is this, right? This, I'm done. I'm trying to help out our drivers because we've got so much work, we can't possibly do it all. All right, so this morning I got, I logged onto our software and took a, took a ride. And I looked at the address for the daycare drop-off in the middle of that ride, picking up somebody, taking them to daycare, taking them to work. And it was nineteen fifteen Thompson Drive, nineteen fourteen Thompson Drive, as pathology Consultants of Central Virginia. And I gave up a job in a partnership, something I'd trained for thirteen years to do and worked for twenty years. And I had to drive across the street from there to drop somebody at school. And I thought, what the hell did I just do? And by the time I picked that guy up and had met with him and talked to him and dropped his kid off at school and taken him where I was, I'd do it all again. I've helped more people than I would have helped as a pathologist. And I'm sorry that this city doesn't see what this opportunity is. I hope you'll help me continue.
Thank you. Next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Second reading, consideration of adopting resolution R-23106 amending the fiscal year 24 to 2028 capital improvement program and the fiscal year 2024 city capital projects fund budget and appropriating three million dollars in funds from the fiscal year 2024 general fund unassigned fund balance to be used for the Riverfront Park Improvements Amphitheater. This item was presented to council for first reading on December 12, 2023. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
Again, we've debated this, we've talked about this for so long. And because of the, the project was previously approved, but because of some increases in construction costs, we had to increase the amount that was allocated budgeted for that project. Again, we talked earlier during work sessions about the investments made downtown and investments of the economic development and the downtown association. And we've seen how those investments have paid off. So this, excuse me, this is another project that's going to also have investments brought back to our city. When tourists come, they can spend money in our restaurants and our hotels and it just adds income and also it adds a quality of life to our citizens and our community. Thank you.
Councilman Dullin?
Thank you. Well, I, I think I really spoke how I felt about this during our first reading. I think it clearly is a opportunity for an investment that will serve all of our citizens well. So that's why I'm so.
Any additional comments?
Yes, I'm always looking for savings. The, I used to pay about twenty-two dollars for a twelve-foot two-by-six. Now I'm paying nine ninety-six for a twelve-foot two-by-six. So construction material is going down. I think we could reap some benefits from materials going down. And what we don't spend, we get back. We keep. So if we can do it a little bit cheaper, I'd be happy. But I'm in agreement with this resolution.
Council Missions?
I just, I don't think it's the right time to be doing this right now. I think we really need to consider trying to put more money back in our citizens' pockets than we should be spending on projects that aren't necessary. You know, earlier I voted on the, on the resolution for the amendment to the budget. And when I looked at it, there was probably about maybe one project that I didn't agree with. And overall, the majority of it, I agree with this project, so I went ahead and I voted for it. But this one, you know, three million for an entertainment venue? I just, I don't think it's the right time. I think that we would be better served figuring out how to send this money back to our citizens. And there are ways that we could do that. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think that that would happen right now. But it's, it's an unnecessary project. It's in a floodplain. And while I do see the points about what it may attract to downtown business and so forth, right now I'm concerned about our citizens' wallet and not the, not the businesses' wallets, downtown, so to speak. And I think that we need to make sure that our citizens are the priority always. And this just doesn't cut it for me.
Vice Mayor Feraldi?
I think I might have turned some heads with the vote we just took on fee reduction and fee waivers. I'd like to put a bow on, on why I voted the way I did just before and how I'm going to be voting now. It's, I find it hypocritical that there are such criticisms saying, quote, Chris Feraldi won't stop DEI and sexualization of kids with your Lynchburg tax dollars. He proposes one-time fee reduction with your money we took and didn't need surplus instead of reducing waste and lowering your tax rates. Is Chris a conservative or a rhino? At Marty Missions on X. Now, I find it very interesting because what did we just do? And who was right out the gate to do that very same policy proposal? Marty Missions. Now, check this out. That three-point-eight million dollars, that could have been used to lower the car tax. That's why I voted against those two proposals. I think it's more effective to use that three-point-eight million dollars to take sixteen cents off the car tax in the upcoming year than paying for trash fees at ten bucks a month. I think it's more effective because personally, I paid for two years of registration. I didn't get the thirty-six dollars back on my car registration. And now we're supposed to hear that Chris is the rhino. Well, guess what? It's January. I guess we've met our annual criticism of Chris here since he's just announced he's, you know, going to be considering, or actually is running for reelection. So we're just going to score as many political points as we can. I want there to be no misunderstanding. The three-point-eight million dollars we had for fee reduction is something I, on principle, I support. But if we're going to start criticizing each other for using fee reduction and then also turn around and say, we're not going to support three million dollars to get economic drivers and downtown culture hubs and businesses going, quite frankly, I don't see the logic. So I wanted to make the community aware why I voted against those two fee reductions, but why I'm voting for this today. We had three-point-eight million dollars we could have used to lower the car tax in a legal way, which these two, one of which who isn't here tonight because he's sick, I hope he gets better, tried to come up with some way of saying, well, if we cut this three million dollars out, we'll be able to lower the car tax. Guess what? That wasn't legal. We had the opportunity and we missed it because we don't have members on council who truly understand and get into the nitty-gritty of what these policy proposals do. And so if we're going to call each other out publicly, I'll do it from here. I'm not going to do it behind the keyboard or my phone.
Prohibited conduct to campaign for public office and Vice Mayor Feraldi just announced his reelection from the dais.
No, I didn't. I did it on Facebook, actually.
Actually, he just, he just told the whole entire.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
I've got a point of order, Madam Mayor, at the floor.
I don't care, Marty. That speaks to, that from in front of us, that doesn't speak here.
Point of order, prohibited conduct, all persons appearing before the council or in the council chamber while at the meeting of the council in the session will not be allowed to or in the council chamber. Vice Mayor Feraldi, in my opinion, just telling, using, using the Facebook channels of the city, I believe just campaigned for public office, telling everybody that he's running for reelection. I believe that's prohibited conduct. I'm asking you.
Give me a break, Marty.
My, my opinion would be is that he did not violate the rules of procedure. You know, I think it was still within the bounds of what we were specifically talking about. You know, my advice would be is, is to continue on. I don't think it was campaigning for public office. You know, but certainly it's up to the mayor to make the ruling.
I don't believe that he was campaigning. He made a statement in reference to his point. So let's move on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Council Missions, I'm moving on to call the vote.
Madam Mayor, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to the motion.
Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did. You already spoke. So I would like, I have a question in reference to some comments I have read regarding this before we vote. The floodplain statement that people make, can we get clarification on that so that we can address that? Because people are talking about it being built in a floodplain. Has that some, is that something that engineers have addressed and discussed so that we can?
It is being built in a floodplain.
Yes.
Designed to account for that.
Okay.
And is, is built in a manner that makes it compatible with where it's being built.
Okay, so that's being addressed. It's been considered. It's not wasting the money that's being invested into it because that's obviously being thought of as it's being built. It will be thought of as it's being built. The other comment that was just made regarding, there, there would be a way for this three million dollars to go back to the taxpayers. We've already, I believe, discussed this ad nauseam, that it cannot go back to the taxpayers, to the citizens in any way, this three million dollars. If we did not spend it on this project, it would have to be spent on a project at some point, at some time. Because if we didn't spend it on this project, it would go back into the unassigned fund balance, correct?
That's correct.
And for as long as we have the current financial processes that we have in place, it would have to at some point be spent on a project. It will never, as we currently have our current policies in place, be able to be returned to taxpayers. Yes or no?
You can't use one-time money to replace recurring revenue.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, the floodplain concern has been addressed. We're not making an unwise investment with this project because it's, it's being addressed by the engineers. And this three million dollars cannot at all go back to the people.
That's correct.
Thank you. Let's vote, please.
Madam Mayor?
Let's vote, please.
Appeal.
I've called the vote.
And I'm calling for an appeal.
And what, and what is the basis for the appeal?
There's been new information presented and I feel like the mayor's silencing me and I'd like to have the council vote. Whether the council, if the council chooses to silence me, they can. Looks like Vice Mayor Feraldi right now is trying to get the floor, which if she were to choose him over me, so be it. But I think that there's been new information presented and I'd like to respond to some of these statements that were made.
Madam Mayor, I was simply going to offer that if you wanted to take the appeal, if you could, you could vote. I would imagine council will reject the appeal. And since I have the moment to speak, if the council member wishes to take out any form of official court documents to make sure that he gets his way, he's certainly welcome to do that as well.
Would anybody like to appeal? I believe all I was doing was addressing the statements that Council Missions made regarding the floodplain and the tax, returning the tax dollars. I had our city staff address those comments, which they did, and now we can vote. There was nothing new other than countering those comments. Anyone have anything to offer to that?
I think we should be voting right now.
So.
Let Marty have a say. It's your. If you were ruling. If you say vote, we vote.
So Madam Mayor, it is within your discretion.
Yes. So it sounds like at this point, there is a majority that would prefer to proceed with a vote, at least informally polled. But certainly if you believe there's new information that's been presented, that Councilman Missions should be given an opportunity to respond to, you could allow him to speak to it.
Well, I would hate for him to feel like he's been silenced. So go ahead.
I've just got a couple of questions for probably both Ms. Witt and city attorney Previously, I think it might have been twenty-two, there was a, there was an ordinance, you guys determined the, where the surplus funds came from, right? As far as what revenue streams, right? And then there was a two-cent real estate tax rebate that was determined that you could do, once you determine those revenue streams, right? And that was a one-time, one-year option, correct?
Correct.
So to say that it would be not possible, to say that you could not give this money back to the taxpayers is actually not accurate. Because there would be a way if you determined those surplus funds, right?
There was seven hundred thousand dollars that was a surplus for real estate that it could go back, but it would cost more to put the credits back on the account than what the citizen would actually get.
And then what were the, where was the rest of it from?
Excuse me?
Where was the rest of it from other than seven hundred thousand? Where were, where were the other surplus funds from?
Council was given the fund balance. There was sales tax, meals tax, lodging tax. There was funds back from personal property tax, but the commissioner of revenues recommendation that council followed was to reduce the assessment for the coming year. And because that goes through a two-year, I'm sorry, the payments cover a fiscal year period, it makes it awkward to determine if that was a surplus and council voted to reduce the assessments going forward for the fiscal year for the personal property tax. So that was taken out of the equation for possibility to go back because we did reduce the assessment. Those are the big, oh, interest on investments, those were the big chunks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so for clarification, the three million dollars we're discussing is not part of the real estate then and therefore would be back into the unassigned fund balance and cannot be returned back to the taxpayers. Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Dullin? Going to reset the vote. Please hang tight. The motion passes five one with one absent.
Okay. We are adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on January 23, 2024 at 4:00 PM in council chamber.